All right, it's six o'clock. I'll call the July 13th, 2021 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Jim Tenell from the Bakers Chapel Pentecostal Holiness Church to provide an invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Board members, for putting prayer in emphasis. I appreciate that on behalf of all the pastors in the county. Well, let us pray. Father, I love you today. You are our heavenly Father, and we ask that you would bless this meeting. Bless the supervisors that are gathered here, all those board members. I pray, God, that your wisdom will be bestowed upon them tonight, that, God, I pray, that as this meeting takes place, that somewhere in the midst of it, we'll know that you are a sovereign God, and that you watch over us not just personally, not just corporately as a church, but even as a local government and a nation. In a time that we need you, we pray that you would be here with us. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Always the first item on our agenda after the invocation pledge of citizens' time. This evening, we have three citizens signed up. The first one is Ms. Linda Meyer. Ms. Meyer?
Good evening. I was wondering how your consideration of the resolution from, similar to what Carroll County did, about the model policies, if you were talking about that, if it's going to be in an upcoming agenda, irregardless of what the school board decided last week. Any response?
Ms. Meyer, I've told you this month ago.
Are you thinking about it? Is it going to be on?
It's not on the agenda tonight.
I realize that, but are, is it?
We don't engage. Move along, ma'am.
Okay. All right. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the new tenure recognition policy. I was always delighted just to have a job. Today, everybody seems to think that they should be entitled to something else. They should be rewarded for coming to work beyond salaries. We haven't, I don't know of any public employee of their demise here in With County because of being overworked. At the current time, we are paying for health insurance, VRS Group Life Employer, hybrid disability insurance, FICA, VRS retirement, retirement-related credit, and unemployment insurance, workers' compensation. Those are enough perks for employees. We do not have to give them a tenure recognition on top of it. It is absolutely outrageous at this point in time, especially since teachers got raises, things are happening all over. It's just impossible for you guys to even think of putting this into action, especially since it says each year they will be rewarded. So this is going to be an ongoing thing, irregardless of your raises and bonuses and so on and so forth. Please reconsider. I don't know who's on your budget committee, but this is certainly not a very good plan. So I'm hoping you disagree with that when it comes to that and rethink it. And you're supposed to be acting in the best interest of taxpayers of With County, and this certainly is not. This just prioritizes employees that are already getting a significant benefit from working here. Okay. Then I'd like to know what and if, and anything has happened with our Speedwell livestock enterprise. It's a mess. It's smelly. It's awful. I had asked if the DEQ would do some water sampling. Cripple Creek is there and so on and so forth. Manure is up to the cow's knees. What are they doing it? What are they going to do to mitigate the smell and so on and so forth? Here, we're in July already. This is an ongoing thing, year to year to year. We need to be on top of it, and we'd like to know, the citizens in Speedwell would like to know, what you guys are doing to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. The next citizen signed up is Mr. Mike Fuller. Mr. Fuller?
Later tonight on the agenda, there is a report from the Apex Center. I had the opportunity to get, see their financial statement through 11 months, I mean, May the 31st, and wanted to point out some things on that that may or may not be in the Apex For this year that just ended, June 30th, Apex received $200,000 from the county for operating cost. The financial statement shows a profit for 11 months of $3,573. Without the $200,000 in there, you're looking at a loss of $196,000. That is an ongoing loss. It has happened every year that Apex has been there. I don't think the upcoming year is going to start any better. According to the Apex website this week, a couple of hours ago, there's only three days booked for events in Ju- July, the rest of July. There's only one day booked in August, three days in September, and three days ending October the 31st. That's 10 days over a period of about three and a half months. That don't pay the bills. It's not going to pay the bills. It never has. There's better use of the money, the taxpayer's money, other than the Apex Center. You need to stop throwing good money after bad. One use I can think of, last meeting, rural retreat rescue squad needed some cash. I'd much rather see money go to something that's going to save somebody's life. I would think a supervisor from that area would agree with that. It's not a good use of our taxpayer money. The debt on that is roughly $6 million, if I believe. The county, in addition to that $200,000, last year paid about a quarter million dollar debt service, at least that much. We spent $12 to $13 million on that, so that's a lot of taxpayer money that's gone. You had the opportunity a couple meetings ago, when you talked about the budget, to put this out. Three of you chose to, four of you did not. Two of those four mentioned their campaign about Apex. You had an opportunity to do something, and you blew it. Hopefully, you'll go back and look at it again. We do not need to spend more money, throw good money after bad, on a losing proposition. It was a pipe dream. When it started, it should have never been done. I think if this board had been in place then, it wouldn't have happened, but it's just going downhill. We cannot afford that for taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Final person we have signed up is Ms. Diane Ennis. Ms. Ennis?
Good evening.
Good evening, y'all. Since you can't answer the question, how many employees would be involved with this tenure program, I'm just going to state that I don't see the reason behind a tenure program for employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. That's all the citizens we have signed up, so we'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices.
Excuse me.
The motion. Pay the invoice.
Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any invoice any supervisor wants to pull out or discuss? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from June the 30th, 2021. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions, discussion, or correction to the minutes as presented? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Bayer, appointments?
Yes. We do have appointments listed. We do have a vacancy on the Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Authority and two vacancies on the With County Community, Withville Community College Board.
Does anybody have any recommendations for those appointments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barry Ayers had reached out to me about two weeks ago, and he has some interest and would like to be put on the Apex Board.
Mr. Ayers is in attendance. Is he still interested in that?
I'll play it over there. See if I can make any difference or find out.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you.
And yes, thank you for serving.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And actually, I believe you're the first person since the board was created for the Black Lake District, so thank you. Do we have any other nominations for any of the appointments, openings we have?
The individuals I sent out is interested, if you all are interested, on the WCC Board.
I'll nominate Mr. Dell Clark. That's the one you're just, you're talking about.
Have a number, motion by Ms. Lawson for Dell Clark for the WCC Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horie. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Clark.
Hopefully, by the next meeting, we will have a final answer. We have, we have had conversations with another person that I believe is interested. We just not got the final word. If anybody else comes or anyone else, we'd be glad to talk to them also.
All right. Moving on to another, do we have anything under old business, Mr. Bayer?
I have no additional old business.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Moving on to new business, first item under new business is the Apex Report. Ms. Gilman, I think you're up to bat.
Good evening, Chairman Vault and all of the Board of Supervisors. I appreciate you all having me here. I think we discussed about some board member coming and doing, you know, every other meeting or something, a report. I'm nervous, so I may ramble. I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming.
I sent in, what I was going to talk about tonight was just our events that we have had, and I think I've sent in all the copies. The Sheep and Goat Show that we had the first weekend in July or June, I did not get a report from them. I asked the lady, and she was supposed to send it, but I haven't gotten a gap. So the second one is our monster trucks, and I think I sent everybody a copy of that after our last meeting, and I realized that Tennessee had fallen off the page somehow. So I added Tennessee in, because we did have some people from certain places in Tennessee, so I hope those are on your new sheets, the Tennessee people. We had, we sold 1,811 tickets, and that was a combination of both shows. We sold at our tickets on site 89 adults and 24 children. Now, Mr. Ron had to run some specials on his tickets to get people, because he said it was really the wrong time of the year to have a monster truck. So he ran three or four different specials to get ticket sales up. It was a good turnout. We had several people from With County. We had lots of people from Withville, plus you all saw wherever else, too. And everybody seemed, we had no complaints. Everybody enjoyed it. Kids galore. If you were there, you saw the kids. They were having a ball. And some parents didn't tell their kids where they were coming, so they were really excited when they found out it was the monster trucks. The other one that we had was the Crossroads Classic All Breed Horse Show. That was July the 2nd and 3rd. Mr. Altizer stated that there were over 300 exhibitors, and the list that I have for that came from the registrar that did the entries for me, and she copied everybody down. So that's where I got that information. The next paper is our Apex Calendar of Events. We are now working on the July 23rd, 25th RC Car. It's a private event, and he will be coming in, I think, this Thursday to make his track, and his event will be next weekend. And you can see, I don't have to read them, because you should have that in front of you. So those are the events that we've got, 2021. All contracts should be, if not the contracts are out, to be signed. And then we do have 2022 bookings already. The monster trucks are already put down to dates for next year. So that's all I have. We do have some things going on, but they're not final. They're, we're still writing out contracts and negotiating prices. So is that the kind of report you need, or is there something else I need to include in future?
I did, Ms. Gilman, I did ask Ms. Gilman when she, excuse, sent out the first list for a profit, profit-loss statement on the events, and Ms. Lewis did send that to me. Trying to find it here, Monday, and I forwarded it to everybody. I don't know if you got it, but that shows the money. Is there anything else y'all would like to see from Ms. Gilman's report?
I mean, other than reviewing the report that Ms. Lewis had seen, I'm thinking everything else is pretty good.
And I do have a question on Ms. Lewis's report on the, she titled it Sheep and Goat Settlement. Oh, I see, Sheep and Goat Symposium. The original list that you, that the Apex Authority gave us, the facility rent was $800, and then with this statement, it was $1,500. Was there a reason for the change?
Our ag rate should be 1,500 for one day. Is that what she changed to two?
Well, the original thing that we had, had $800, and I questioned.
They showed $800, and they were going, using the barn, I think.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. They were going to use the barn, but in order to use the barn, they had to take all the horse stalls down. So then they went to the arena, and then, thank you. I appreciate that.
Does anybody else have anything from Ms. Gilman?
No, but thank you. Thanks for coming and that not calling through the cracks. It's nice to start this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for putting Barry and Jamie on our board. We appreciate that.
And y'all, and y'all are fooled.
And we're treating them good.
Y'all are fooled. I mean.
Yes, yes, that should fill all of us.
Well, I lied to Barry and told him. Y'all had lunch.
Well, he's been at one of our meetings, so he, he's had a taste of it.
He's in for sore surprise.
Yeah, we told him when you get on, there's no getting off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilman.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me asking, Mr. Wyatt called today to ask for some information that was included in the report that we talked about during the budget season. Is there any problem with me sharing information from that report?
Who called?
Mr. Wyatt, one of them, Jamie Wyatt, one of the Apex Board members.
Oh, sorry. I, okay.
I wouldn't see why not.
As far as I'm concerned, it's public information.
I'll share it.
We paid you to do it, so forgive the call. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is a reassessment update. Mr. Mike?
I'll look back at it.
That's where I was going with that.
I'm sorry to thank the board for our company giving us the opportunity to do this reassessment. We always look forward to doing jobs that we haven't, in areas that we haven't done before, so. As of yesterday, the 12th, we've inspected approximately 10,640 parcels in the county, and that is about 54% of the total number of parcels. And approximately 5,000 of those have been entered into the new software. The county has a new software, camera system now for appraising the property. We have about, we have four assessors working on the job currently. We have one person out in the rural retreat area moving, he's actually been through the rural retreat down south and then moving south. We have another inspector in the Max Meadows area. We have another gentleman working just outside the town limits in that area between Route 52 and 77. And then my, I'm primarily inspecting commercial properties, so I'm working here in the town of Withville and then moving out to the surrounding areas. So my current expectation is that we will complete the field inspections late October of this year, on the data entry, valuation review, proofing of the data, value adjustments, and all the adjustments that have to be done in the new software that should be done by the end of the year. This reassessment is not typical in the fact that there is a data conversion being done, so I've been through maybe four or five of these in my career. They increase the level of difficulty because you're taking data from one software system and importing it into another one. And that's not always a one-to-one relationship. Sometimes data is, doesn't transfer. Sometimes it gets jumbled up. Sometimes it, the new system will do things with it that you did not foresee or plan on. So everything has to be scrutinized very carefully, more so than normal. So we're, I think we're a little behind where we would like to be in this process. We didn't really have the vision software to actually work in until middle of May. So we've started the project in the field late last year, last fall, so. As far as the market, what I have looked at, I'm not really, I'm not going to be able to give you any kind of indication of what I think is going to happen to the values at this point, but reviewing the market data since January of 2020, after, after weeding out non-arm's-length transactions and sales of multiple parcels, there was about 455 sales in 2020. And so far this year, up through June, we have about 228 sales going through the same filtering process. And comparing the current assessment, the one that's already on the books for 2021, to the actual sale data, the ra, that ratio of assessment is about 90% for the 2020 sales. For the 2021 sales, it's around 82%. So the market is increasing substantially. I, you know, I've heard all kinds of stories about people outbidding each other and things of that nature. To me, it seems like an irrational market. I don't see how this can continue, but it is what it is at this point. So that's, that's the data that we're looking at. And most of that market is being driven by residential sales. They make up about 89% of those figures. There's seven classes of property. Class one and two are residential classes. Class three is apartments, so it might be roughly 1% of those sales are apartments. And they're about, they're probably around 89% also. And then at commercial and agricultural properties, they seem to be assessed between 95 and 100% of value. So that portion of the market doesn't seem to be affected by the recent conditions in the market. So it appears the residential property is what's increasing and mostly driving it. Typically, when we do this, your, your sale data doesn't always reflect all the property in the locality. I just looked at this one property, this is a property, I'm not going to say which one it was, but it sold in June, just, just sold recently, within the last few weeks. It sold for $215. It's assessed currently, 2021, for $124.5. Now, that's not typical. That, that ratio is about 55% of market value. However, there's, if you just Google the address, if you just go on the internet and Google the location address, and you'll pull up all kinds of listing data with pictures and everything. So the description on this property is, let me see, lovely renovated home, one level, practically brand-new, nearly every surface in the home addressed, custom oak cabinets, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops. Additional features include updates rendered in the past two years, new windows, new HVA system. So there's a number of items on this house that are not assessed. So if we included what should be assessed, that ratio would not be, on this particular property, would not be 55%. It would probably be about 70, 75%. So if a property is on the market or has sold, we'll probably be able to verify the interior information. If it hasn't, we won't know that unless the property owner tells us. So we'll find a lot of this data, and we won't find all of it, so. Any questions?
Do they might have any questions? Mr. Bayer, with his expectation that they'll be done late October, early November, does that, is that going to give us time to look at the data and adjust the tax rate?
It will, because we, we'll be setting that next April, May timeframe when we do it, so they'll have their board of assessors sitting, and I don't have got a timeframe on that yet, but their board of assessors will sit afterwards, and then we'll have to appoint our board of equalization for, I would guess, early 2022.
Typically, I think the code says they, they cannot have their first meeting until 30 days after we've notified the public of the informal board of assessors.
Because I, just looking at other localities, it seems that's the biggest concern is people get the assessment in the mail and see that their property went up and figure what, you know, they, they don't realize by the code if it goes up.
Goes up over the 1% level, you've got to adjust the, you've got to advertise it as a tax increase in the process, if you don't change your rate.
I think a lot of people think it's a sneaky way to increase tax revenue, but there's protections in the code that you can't do.
No, you can't.
Well, yeah, it says, and I think it says in the code that you have to figure out what the revenue-neutral rate is and then go.
I just, I'm waiting on y'all to get done the retreats, so I'm pressured to wash my house. I've been putting it off for two years.
Are you all leaving any type of door cards or anything?
Yes, we are. Yeah, there's a, there's a yellow card that we leave, and we'll just try to either stick it in the door jamb or whatever, we can attach it. And that has, that has just a general description of what we're doing and the phone number for our office here.
And typically, I always receive a few phone calls every time we've got reassessment going on, and it's been a relatively quiet reassessment. We've got some calls about vehicles and nothing, all your vehicles and bark and all that.
We'll probably get about a half a dozen calls a week if that, just wanting to know what's going on.
And, and if you all have any questions or, you know, within the contract, they, they can go and make presentations to civic groups, so if the Lions or the... they can go and make presentations to civic groups, so if the Lions or the Ruettons or the whatever group is interested in reassessment or any information, we can have them come out to do so. So we're trying to use our webpage, just sort of keep up data where they are so people know the information.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the West County Registrar or Elections Systems Maintenance Agreement.
Y'all may remember during budget presentation, the registrar was presenting information about an extended maintenance agreement, and you all agreed to that. Just put this in front of you all to authorize staff to sign the maintenance agreement for Mr. Count.
Entertain a motion to authorize staff to execute the agreement. So have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Do we have any discussion or questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is lead mines rescue squad change order number one, and hopefully the last.
Yeah, this, at the last meeting, you all recommended awarding the contract and a construction bond. Mr. Kinsler has worked with the company on the construction bond. Staff fully recommends in this current building environment and everything else that we do get the construction bond, so we recommend approval of this change order number one.
Entertain a motion to approve the change order number one. Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts, have a second by Mr. Smith. Tell it's on y'all's end of the campaign. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I will just add, the contractor has told us to anticipate a long lead time of the metal building coming in. So you all know the environment we're in, and that's not entirely unexpected, but they said it could be as much as five or six months, so.
I don't think you're going to see any shock looks. Next item on the agenda is the Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority, their financial report that you received in your packy, board pack. Do we need to take action?
I'd just take action to accept the report. We met two weeks ago, Mr. Terry, Ms. Lawson.
Yes.
Two weeks ago. Audit's very simple audit, very limited transactions they do, recommend acceptance of the audit.
Entertain a motion to accept is presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the tenure recognition policy. Mr. Barr or Mr. Hankins?
Be glad to start there, Mr. Chairman. What staff is, earlier y'all talked about trying to come up with some form of recognition and staff, we kicked around several ideas. This is the discussion that we have with the Budget Committee. As you can see, it's basically recognizing employees for every time they hit a five-year milestone, 5, 10, 15, 20. They would be awarded $10 per year for every year of service, and it would be an independent pay run that would be run to present that to them. Of course, it would be subject to taxes and FICA. This first year, since it would be starting off, it does have the caveat that anybody that's over that last five-year increment would be receiving it, and then obviously would not receive another one until they get to their next five-year. This is the policy that was, the concept that was reviewed, page 77, is the policy for your all's consideration for adoption.
Who, what county employees does this include?
This includes everyone that is employed by you all, which is all, all the county administration employees, department heads, and all constitutional officers.
So it include, does it include deputies?
Yes.
Does it include teachers?
No. They, it's basically everybody that's paid through our payroll system, which is all constitutional officers and your county employees here.
Okay, so, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. If, if I've worked here five, not me, but if an employee's worked here five years, they get $50. On the sixth year, do they get, they don't get another one until the 10th year?
So if, if, I'll use myself example, if I've worked here 11 years, this time I would be getting a 10-year recognition. If Matt had worked here 27 years, he'd be getting 25-year recognition. Then obviously not until Matt reaches 30-year recognition would he be getting a different one, not until I reach 15 years would he be getting it. So it's hitting virtually, well, it's hitting all employees that have more than five years of service this first year. In the future, it'll be hitting, you know, theoretically, one-fifth of your employees every year.
That's one time, it's $50, a one time, not 50 a month, or 50 a year?
It's $50, you get one-time payment for $50. That would, if Mr. Hankins has five years of service, he would get a $50 payment. Y'all would do this once a year, then he would get that $50 payment August 1st or whatever the timeframe is that we do this, for their service as of June 3rd. Next year, he's got six years of service, not getting anything. Next year, seven, not getting anything. When five years out, when it's 10 years of service, Mr. Hankins would be getting $100 under this policy.
So it's given, is it given like a bonus?
It is a stipend, it is a, it is an award. It's just a flat check award that would be provided.
Okay, gotcha.
You, and I don't remember how long ago it was, but years ago, you gave plaques and jackets, and it's basically, instead of a.
Instead of trying to come up with plaques or different types of recognition, this is just a standard.
Okay.
Basically, $10 a year is what you're giving somebody.
Is there any more questions or discussion?
What, $10 a year, what are you? $10 a year is what they're basically being rewarded. At five years, they're getting $50.
Okay.
But at five years, they get $50, six years, they get nothing, the seventh year, they get nothing, then when they get to the 10th year, they get $100.
Right.
I personally think it makes sense. Obviously, I've got people that don't agree with it in my area, so I would.
Excuse me, Mr. Horni, that's enough. I'm sorry.
But I mean, if we, I know we have step raises, and if we did a step raise every year, then I would say, no, we don't need it. But we don't need a step raise every year. And I think that's what the step raise makes. And that's mine.
Does that mean we've got to pay coy $250 when it comes around?
It would not be a long time, 28 years or something.
Well, I noticed he put 50 years in there, I figured that was the year.
Not quite there.
I've got.
Is there any more questions or discussion? Here and now, I'll open forward for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any more questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Just because I have people that have opposed and no.
Aye. I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
No.
Aye.
What was that count? Three ayes, two noes, two abstentions.
I wanted to make sure it was okay, I made the motion. Since it covers.
What was your, what was your basis for abstaining?
Well, just to be safe, but technically, if it covers more than just the sheriff's office and it's all departments, then I shouldn't abstain.
You don't have to abstain. I would say that there's no conflict there because it covers more than just your personal interests. So you're free to make the motion, and you're free to vote on it, and I would give the same advice to the chairman.
So can I go back and vote? Because I missed, I got nervous there and missed what was going on, that maybe I shouldn't have.
I, I think you can always have a vote reconsidered.
So what do we need to do, Mr. Barr?
Just to vote, or motion reconsider the vote?
Just do a motion to reconsider the vote first.
All right.
And then another vote, and that's the safety thing. Someone wants a motion to reconsider the last vote, just do that first.
So I can make a motion to reconsider the last vote.
I have a motion to reconsider by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 All right, now, have a motion to accept as presented.
So I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry again.
Aye.
No.
Now.
Aye.
No.
Aye. So approved. Before we move on, I, I don't, historically, I've not accepted pay raises since I've been up here that come out of the general fund, and I think I'm up to, this year, I'll knock on wood, I've saved the county about $19,500. With that being said, looking at this chart, I'll be eligible in 18 years for $150. I will accept that, but I will be donating it to the Logan Smith Memorial Scholarship, if that's all right, Supervisor Smith.
Thank you, sir.
And I did not want to say that beforehand to influence your vote.
And I will also apologize that I just caused a little bit of confusion there, but I didn't want any of the county employees to not get it or vice versa because of a mistake I had made in abstaining.
All right, moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act, which we are calling ARPA until I forget, and I call it COVID money. Mr. Barr?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what you've got there, you'll see, we are scheduled to receive $5,571,531 in the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. The good news with these funds, it's not like last time where we had about eight or nine months to have everything spent, which really kept you from doing any long-range projects or things like that. These have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. The first thing that I would request is that you all consider holding a public hearing at our August meeting to amend our budget by this amount, because it is larger than a 1% increase in our budget, we have to have a public hearing to do so. Secondly, be considering, obviously, Budget Committee will be discussing it, staff will be discussing, we'll talk with you all about it, but trying to divvy up how we allocate these funds into projects. We are anticipating by our broadband proposal that we would need $2 million short of any other grants or anything that we get right there, so staff will be recommending that we put at least $2 million into broadband things. The other is water and wastewater is eligible for infrastructure projects, and staff would highly recommend that a majority of the remaining funds go towards that. Obviously, a small amount of the funds, we talked this year, we didn't fund some of our nonprofits and some of our other agencies that we were counting on receiving this money to assist us with, so we'll have to set some of that aside for that purpose. But the first thing would be at least amending the budget to include this into the next year's budget.
So do we need to set a public hearing?
I would request a motion to set a public hearing for August 10th, 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, and a second by Mr. Smith, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Is that the only action we need to take?
At this time, yes, sir. I welcome your all's input and feedback. Water Committee next week, we'll be talking a little bit about this. When we had our meeting with Mr. Peed a couple of months ago, we looked quite a bit at some of the projects, and some of the projects have no new customers, so we know we're not going to have eligibility of getting any grant funds on those. So we need to decide whether this is new line water projects or some replacement line water projects, or a combination of both. Some of those were some replacement projects that still added 100 and some customers and things like that. We need to prioritize those in the process in the next month or so. The, talk just generally with the engineering firm that is doing our sanitary sewer work right now for us, and they're like all of the firms, they are sort of ramping up in anticipation of having a lot of these projects out there to be done as quickly as possible, and we need to get started on them rapidly. So it's all that's needed at this time, sir.
While we're talking about the ARPA money, NACO sent out an email today about the governor's first proposal for the use of their ARPA fund. One of the things is, he's looking at $53 million for the industrial revitalization fund, which looks at vacant, deteriorated industrial and commercial properties. If we can look around or have Mr. Manley and his group look around and see if there's anything that qualifies for that. And they're looking at, or he's suggesting, $50 million for Virginia Tourism Recovery, which talks about funding the destination marketing programs. I know one of the complaints we hear about the Apex Center is it needs a sign. I'm not in favor of spending county money for a sign, but if we can get some of that $50 million for a sign, I'm sure that Mr. Bowers would dig a hole for it.
And we just got word today, the governor will be at the Southwest Virginia Higher Ed Center Friday morning at 10 o'clock for announcement on broadband, so we are just assuming this will be a large commitment towards broadband, and if he's in Southwest Virginia, that's even better for us in the process.
Is Mr. Hankins going to attend that?
Well, he and I, he and I shared that today, just to see.
Ralph didn't invite me, sir. Anything under the ARPA? Anything else under the ARPA?
No, but, and I put all that information in there for you all to review, you all welcome to review online, but it lines out, you know, sort of the major categories, and we see the major categories, been in infrastructure, and, you know, we'll see how the board wants to proceed with that.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Capital Improvements Plan. Mr. Hankins, I believe, this is yours.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is your annual capital improvement plan. It's your way to forecast what your future needs are for major expenditures. It doesn't obligate you to spend anything other than what you have in the current year. This plan comes to you a little later than usual because we had to incorporate a new element. VDOT is now requiring that we include the revenue sharing programs in the capital improvement plan before they'll approve them for funding on their side. So we had to take a little extra time to get that done. You've had this document since early June, and you've had the opportunity to look at it. There was one mistake in the one that you saw in June, our animal shelter is not valued at the same amount as Scott Memorial. valued at the same amount as Scott Memorial. So that, that has been fixed. But this plan is put together by your, your staff and your department heads who are forecasting your, your capital needs. We'd like for it to be all encompassing, but I'm sure there are some things that we haven't thought of that you might be able to, and we'll, we'll be glad to make any changes that, that you desire. We will probably, we, we had a different process to do it this year. We'll probably have a, a new and improved process next year, once, now that we've, you know, got a few of the wrinkles ironed out. So be glad to answer any questions that you have specifically about the plan or the plan development.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
And I will express my appreciation to Mr. Hankins and to Colleen and the people he has working on this. I, I hope you all find the documentation useful. I mean, you know, we, we talked about Hunt Collins Tank as one of the examples. When we say Collins Tank needs repair, but when you actually look at it and see what, what it looks like, you understand why some of these things need repair. So it, it puts a picture there that sort of helps explain some of the things that need to, to be done for repair work. And I, I appreciate all the work that they put into this, trying to at least come up with a, a little bit different approach so you all could see some of the needs that are out there.
And your planning commission has reviewed it and recommended approval.
And I'll, I'll echo what Mr. Bear said, not only for us, but, you know, some of the pictures of what we're looking at, I think it's good for transparency's sake for the, for the public. You know, the circuit court roof, I don't think many of us that had the means would live in a house that had a roof like that, so. It's pretty interesting, I'm not climbing up on the roof to look either.
I would recommend, we, we do need to have this adopted prior to.
October first.
October first, I was going to say September first, October first, for part of our revenue sharing applications require that the roads be included in the capital improvements plan. If you're comfortable with it and what's on there, you can adopt it tonight. We can always amend and add different things to it. If you want more time to review, we can do that, and we can put it on the agenda in the future.
I'll open the floor if anybody wants to make a motion to adopt. Bearin Springs Community Center, I hate to step on Coys toes, but that's over double what we authorized for that.
What's shown is the estimated cost of six hundred, and that was based on the final, the last engineer's estimate. The local funds is still showing the, the three fifty that we had in there. So it is saying it's in there, but it's still the same amount of local funds, so we'd still be looking for grants or other types of things to fund that. But you are correct.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the stuff that's listed in here, we're, we've budgeted for, we're going to do this year.
Correct.
Some of it is looking toward the future of, we need to address this, but like Mr. Bear said, you know, bid comes in for the tennis courts, and it's too high, we don't, we're not bound to do it.
Right, you are not obligated. There is a spreadsheet, the first couple of pages after the, the memo, and that details just the numbers of what you funded this year. There's yellow highlighting that, that shows what you funded in the budget, and then there's one section that's highlighted in green, you funded that from money that you had borrowed previously. So that, that's a little more clear about what you've budgeted for current year.
Can I ask a question about this spreadsheet?
Yes, sir.
Why does it cost so much more to pave Spiegel's convenience center than it does all the other convenience centers?
We have that same question. Billy said that's the estimate that we got from the paver. We won't get a really good number on it until we actually put it out to bid. We all think it's going to be lower than that, but that was the number that, that came in from the, the contractor he contacted.
All right, second thing is.
We, we, we thought it probably actually included multiple sites, and that may be the case, but he, he said that was, that was accurate for Spiegel, but we'll, we'll see once we get a bid.
Second thing is, it's in there twice.
I'm not surprised.
It's under solid waste, too.
If, if I had a, a six and a half million dollar dog shelter, I'm not surprised I've got a paving center in there twice. But we, we'll, we'll get it fixed.
One point out, so you can correct it.
Thank you, sir.
We'll make those corrections then and look at bringing it back to you all at a future meeting. And if there's any questions y'all have, or please do not hesitate to contact Matt or myself, either one.
Anything else on that, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, I have nothing else.
Next item on the agenda is the Sheriff's Office request drug enforcement petty cash.
You have a memo that was emailed to you and also one in front of you there. Sheriff's Office has made a change on the way they're handling some narcotics enforcement, and the first item for recommendation is the, to request that you amend and appropriate ten thousand dollars to a line item within the thirty-one oh two budget titled Narcotics Enforcement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Chief Foster, you want to come up here and explain that? That's called putting you on the spot.
Some of you may or may not know, at one point, the Sheriff's Office was involved in Clayton Lake Drug Task Force. It was a multi-county effort to curb drug abuse, arrest drug offenders. So upon myself and the current sheriff discussing the matter, we decided to, I reckon what you would say is just end that relationship, focus more on our own community. We have an escalating drug problem here. It's taken a lot of our efforts away from West County. Another part of that is, if the seizures or the cash property per se was taken, we had to split this between every agency, which usually our take, that not only was it the agencies, it was the prosecuting attorneys. So after that split was made, you were probably looking at about a seventeen to eighteen percent of monies that you were to get. If we decide to go this route, we can take the monies, which we would probably get about seventy percent, and we could take that and use it to fund our own program. I believe in the end, it will be self-supporting. I looked at the statistics when I approached the sheriff about it. There was about eighteen drug arrests made by the task force, and my agency made sixteen or seventeen of them. So that tells me, West County's doing all the work. So at that point, why don't we just have our own continuance? And like I said, I've spoke with Mr. Bear, he's helped me a lot on this, I spoke with Mr. Cook today. I believe in the end, it'll be self-supporting. We all know we have a problem, and there's nobody more important to me right now, or has ever been, than the citizens of our own county. I wish we could help the other counties more, but I think we're going to have a good program. I think it'll be a real effective program, and I'm really looking forward to getting around with it and running it.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Foster?
No, just a comment, I mean, I couldn't agree with you more.
It just makes good fiscal sense.
You know, it takes care of our own people.
Exactly.
I think it's where we need to focus. We've got to take care of our own house first.
Exactly, that's right. It's not that I wouldn't like to help them, but we've got several individuals down there in my office who's very, very dedicated to this day and night, and I know they're going to do us a good job. There's not a doubt about that.
And, and I will say something that even I learned on the circuit court.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that, too. If persons are found guilty of the crimes that they're committing while we're enforcing this, the monies have to be paid back one hundred percent in full before they can ever be released from probation. So it's almost a guarantee we're going to get their money back. That's the only way they'll ever get off probation. That money has to be paid upfront.
And they, they take the county's part out before the fines and court fees.
Yeah, that'll go back and, and live with the buyer. Climbing up here, I've got a little bit more good news for you. It's not the news we've been expecting, but I did receive a call today from the jail, the major received a call. They will have inmates here Friday, this Friday, and next Monday to clean up any roadways, preferably any ones that we know that might be in need of attention. We've hit fifty-two, we've hit ninety-four, we've hit twenty-one south. So if you all have any recommendations, or anybody's made any complaints to your, you see any that's in dire need of.
Chapman Run.
There's a, before Mr. Smith gives order. They're not paving.
Chapman Run. I'm going to share, just Chapman Run.
Okay, sir.
Wesley Highway, there's a fifty-gallon hefty bag that apparently exploded. There's trash, probably a fourth of a mile if you've been through there. Did you see?
That's what we're trying here?
Yeah.
Those two, I would say, would probably occupy, if they were able to complete them those two days, but I'll definitely tell Mr. Dawkins when he brings them up, that this Friday and Monday, weather permitting, I hope they're going to go away.
Now, is this going to be a, a continual thing?
That I don't know. I do know we have them Friday and Monday.
Well, we'll talk about it Friday.
We've got a meeting Friday, so we'll talk to them about it some more. And while I'm up here, if, if it's okay, where you all just passed the tenure thing, I'm very appreciative of it. I'm working on my thirty-fifth year, and if it's okay with Jamie, I've got thirty-four years' service. I would like to donate my three hundred dollars in memory of Logan and his legacy, if that'd be okay with you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, partner.
Thank you.
Hold on, don't lose. We have a motion and a second on the initial request from, was it Mr. Cook?
Yeah.
And Mr. Smith? Is there any more questions and discussion on that? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote for Mr. Terry?
Ah.
Ah.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
Ah.
So approved. Chief, before you leave, did you bring this on?
Yes, I did want to present it to you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to, do you want to go over this and, and the reason I do this? Have you seen this, Mr. Bear, on the armored?
Is that on the armored? I just got it today.
And the reason, and it's, I, I'll say, I believe it's time-sensitive, because we don't have a Budget Committee meeting this month, but I'll let you, I'll let you explain. You didn't give me any of that money, get dangerous.
We sent this to Mr. Bear, he's been speaking to the major about it, he got the copy of it. We've had five shooting incidents in this county. I was one of those people who was shot. We're asking the county to look at maybe helping us purchase a barcat. It's an armored vehicle. We have the funds allocated through the Police Activity Fund to take care of it. I've priced one of these vehicles new and fully furnished at about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We can buy an upgraded vehicle, it's got the same body that the brand-new one would have, but Ford Motor Company places a brand-new motor in with a two- or three-year warranty, which basically to get a brand-new vehicle, and it cuts, it cuts the cost in half. So that being said, you would drop it down to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And in most of these dangerous situations, and most of the officers who have been shot have been shot in the cover of darkness. So to help alleviate that, I've also asked that some funding be taken from that out of police supplies and placed in with our tact team to buy night vision and things where they can see these individuals in the dark. That's our biggest handicap, like everyone else, you can't see in the darkness. The night that I was shot, it was pitch dark, I couldn't see a foot in front of me. And lighting didn't help wooded areas, this night vision stuff would really, really be beneficial. I don't want to have another police officer shot. I, I've been there, I know what it feels like. It's just a dangerous situation, and it's really just a travesty to the office to have this, these monies available and not be able to use them to protect my officer. But I just want to give that to the chairman, and like I said, I've, I've been speaking and working, Mr. Bear's worked really well with me on it, and this is just a request for you all's reviewing, if you had time, I would just so review it.
And I just emailed the board the memo I got this afternoon, which is that one. Basically, they're requesting a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to amend and appropriate to motor vehicles and equipment, and sixty thousand to the four-six-one-two-six-zero police supplies. And you answered my question I was going to have, that didn't add up to the three hundred and thirty-something, but you're saying you're going to be able to get one for about the one seventy-five.
Basically, the only difference is new versus old, and you're cutting the price in half. I mean, the metal's not going anywhere. It was the motor and the differential transmission things I was worried about, and we're going to get a two-year guarantee.
Yeah.
And I've also attached a letter to the original memorandum that talks about sole, source pricing, so that, that we wouldn't have to go out and compete for bids and stuff against it. We've got photos available, I can get some of our tactical guys to explain anything to you about it. It, it's basically just armored vehicle for our protection, and it, if it's utilized correctly, it will save lives.
And this will be paid for out of Police Activity Fund, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
The Police Activity Fund, at the end of May, was eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, so it's grown substantially over the last year, and that's where they've got the funds to do that.
You need a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion, or second, whatever we need.
Y'all fired it out?
Ah, it doesn't matter if it's first or second.
All right, I got a motion from Mr. Cook and a second from Mr. Terry.
For clarification, that is to amend both budget items that they are requesting, a hundred and seventy-five and sixty thousand.
Yes.
Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Ah.
Ah.
Abstain.
I'll abstain.
Ah.
So approved.
Thank you all very much, you've probably saved somebody's life, not only the police officers and citizens of the county. That, that would be a great asset today.
Chief Foster, you can sit down and don't get caught.
Before he sits down, actually, I do need you all, there's a second item on the drug enforcement petty cash that you all need to do also. If I can get it to go to there. Oh, hang on. The current petty cash in the Sheriff's Office for Narcotics is one thousand dollars. Would request, as requested by the sheriff here, to increase the narcotics petty cash from one thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. And that will give them their operating funds for their activities. As they make their transactions and make their arrests, as they need to replenish that petty cash, we will draw that down to the State Asset Forfeiture Fund for more drug enforcement.
And that's asset forfeiture money, and Stephen's been in really close contact about, about this, too. We have federal as well as state, and you all have the numbers on what the sums of those are right now.
So need a motion to increase petty cash from one thousand to five thousand dollars?
Second.
You get that?
That you?
It doesn't matter.
Got a motion by Mr. Horny and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? And just to clarify, you put that very eloquently, eloquently, but that's drug buy money, correct? Here, anybody else have any? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Ah.
Ah.
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
Ah.
All right.
Thank you all very much, we're going to take it hard, we're going to take it carefully.
I'm, I'm getting a little soapbox here in just a minute, so don't get caught.
Thank you.
Anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
Before we go on, do we have any update what Ms. Meyer talked about? Have we heard anything about the Spiegel feed lot?
The, the last time we checked, the D-DAX, everything was in place, I'll do another follow-up with them. DEQ has no policy for, other than, than monitoring runoff, they do not do the water testing or anything like that.
Who does that?
I mean, they could do that, but that's not part of their policy unless there's a reason or rate, you know, an object there that's, an incident that's happened that justifies them doing that. But we'll, we'll follow up, I'll have Mr. Kinsler talk to D-DAX and to DEQ again on that area.
Anything else under new business? Mr. Bear, Mr. Hankins? All right, moving on to Board of Supervisors time, Mr. Smith?
I only have one item, Mr. Chairman. The most recent rainfalls that we got for the last couple of days, the runoff from Salem Stone, where they extended on the north side of their facility on top of the mountain at Lost Gap.
Okay.
There is a lot of runoff, it's, and the sand is filling up the drains, causing them to overrun, overrun where the easements are at, and it's causing issues for the residents down the mountain. So if we. So if we, if we get that took care of, I don't know if they could put some kind of sealed fencing up or, or at least try to grass it right there.
To both sides of the mountain or the north side?
It's both sides. But on the, the south side, right there at Walton Forest Road, that, that drain fills up real bad and it just comes out in the road. The other side, I know Ricky Scott, I think, he lives at the foot of the mountain, he worked on his road probably three and a half, four hours, and he's got an asphalt driveway. So they, it was real bad there yesterday.
It was a mess.
Yeah.
Where I went across the road?
Yeah, right at the top, the drain, the drain, it actually cuts across right where my land and their land corners gets completely packed. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Cook?
The only thing I have is, I'd like to see if we could review the policy with the dumpsters for where we take our trash. Apparently, in somewhere in the policy, it says that you can only bring a wheelbarrow full of building supplies to the plantation place. And, you know, I just think that's ridiculous. I went to the one in town, out on fifty-two, got turned away, so I went to the one on Royal Street and they took it. But, point is, I don't, I mean, the point is, it's a ridiculous policy, in my opinion, that a wheelbarrow full of building materials is all you're able to bring out there. I mean, I don't know, anybody tries to do anything at their home and only has a wheelbarrow full of building supplies.
You ain't never seen my wife do it because she reuses everything.
And, and Mr. Cook, we had talked, or me and him had talked about that, and it was, I don't know, two or three days later, I went to the recycling center and, and I understand the purpose, but there was a pickup truck with farmers on it. I'm not going to channel.
Get another article.
Delaying the trail, but, and it was, the bed was full of old bicycles, old gas grills. And this whole trash program goes by weight, correct? For the most part.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Cook couldn't take more than a wheelbarrow full of sheet rock that he busted out of his basement. But you can take a whole truckload of scrap, which is going away more. I understand the concept behind, we don't want contractors remodeling houses and coming in there with a tractor trailer, but, you know, I agree with Mr. Cook. It's, you know, if somebody wants to do a weekend project, I, you know...
It is weight, just, most of the, the metals and everything, though, they actually, they, they get all the money out of recycling those items. So that's, that's why they accept all of those in the process because it doesn't cost us anything on that side of it. But we can talk about it. It has been discussed before, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. It is, it is a delicate balance. We're paying about one and a half million dollars a year for trash disposal, and part of the rationale has been limiting the waste, large amounts. We do have the transfer station that people can go to and they can pay for disposing large amounts. So it is a balance. I understand the frustration you're talking about. We do have other options where they can pay for it, but I know that they don't always like taking it and paying for it. And, and in the process of renegotiating that, you know, if we do make changes to it, then our contractor will be making changes because theirs is also based on the amount of trash they're taking. So our price of one and a half million dollars is going to go up if we, we change that. But we can, we can talk about it, and that's, it's been a balance.
And I would never do it, but where would you rather have it?
Oh, absolutely.
At the green boxes or along some dirt road somewhere?
We don't want it dumped out somewhere.
Because it's got to be gone, you know? I mean, people are going to get rid of it. That's why we see couches and all this other kind of stuff thrown along the road is because we won't take them.
Well, and, and that's the thing, you can take a cab.
Yep.
Even though it won't fit in the wheelbarrow.
Yeah.
And while we're on it, another problem is, I get more complaints about the one out on fifty-two, closing five to ten minutes early, how rude they are to people, closing early before lunch, shutting the gate right in front of one of my family members that I completely trust that they're telling the truth, you know, five, ten minutes early, over and over. I get more complaints about that than anything else.
Yeah, and that happens all the time.
And they're very, very rude to people.
Yep.
I've witnessed that.
We have talked to, I'll talk to Mr. Bowers tomorrow on that one, and we'll talk to the contractor on that one. And thank you, because that's, that's the only way we can find out if, if they've got complaints.
Well, and it's not both, though. It's one of them.
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
Ms. Lawson?
I did have one thing. I already spoke to Mr. Bear about it. I had a complaint on the smell of whatever it is that Gatorade is dumping out in Progress Park. But I discussed it with Mr. Bear, and he said that there's a lease there and that's allowed. That's all I had.
And, and just for clarification, when you said dump it, basically, there is a, they are land applying a agricultural enhancement product, is what it is. It's, it's coming out of their waste operations of their processing water. It is not sludge waste or anything like that. It's coming out of a residential waste or anything like that.
I should have clarified that, but, and this, but it's, most of all, it's not something new that should start it.
It's, it's been land applied on lots out there for maybe ten years or so in the process. But we'll, we'll take note, and if you'll share with me that individual's name and information, so I can find out the location, I would appreciate it.
I sure will.
Anything else, Ms. Lawson?
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. McCrawford?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Horny?
Actually, I noticed something on the way over here. A sign at the end of Barrett Mill with Grayson Turnpike. Can't see it from the vine that grew on up in it. So somebody needs to clean sign. Other than that, I, well, the only other thing I had was, I see you send an email to V-Dax, I can probably, can you have them just check the ditch there at the house on the corner and make sure that when you get these big reins, it's not going under that house because someone bought that house in there now.
There at Old Bank in St. Peters?
Yeah, that big white house.
Mr. Terry?
The only thing I've got is just kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Cook had to say about the fifty-two waste center because they had the same problem. We had to replace a sink in our bathroom, and it was a, a side-by-side sink that had dual sinks. And the guy come and said, you can't dump it because it doesn't fit in the wheelbarrow. And they, it was, that conversation went south really quick, and somebody that I was with said, if you're man enough to put it back in my truck, you have at it. It got dumped. But that guy, they're right, is a jerk, straight up. I mean, he is a jerk.
They're nice and very true.
Yeah. I almost saw that's where I drive the road tree, like the dill that he did, you know? I'm just going to be honest with you.
No, no, don't be filling her dumpster with it. Anything else, Mr. Terry?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Foster, you're moseying on up here. Mr. Martin, this is probably going to be a fine line, so if, if I cross it, you yell at me.
You need the gavel?
It, 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 it only, it doesn't only affect the sheriff's office. We, we've had a mental health crisis in, in Virginia for several years, and the governor has recently, in his infinite wisdom, has just made it horribly much worse by not closing down, but five mental health institutes in Virginia are not going to receive patients. It has become commonplace for law enforcement, sheriff's office, town police department, every other county, to spend fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-four hours with the TDO and then have to drive eight hours to Titler. Now, at some point, we have to say enough's enough. You know, the, these people are entitled to overtime, and where's the money coming from? So I would request that we draft a letter to send to the governor and our delegates and our senators. And then I would like, Mr. Bear, for you to schedule a meeting with the director of Mount Rogers and myself, and I know Mr. Smith's on the board, if, if he's available. Because they're, they're getting temporary detention orders that, that's from the magistrate, which is a legal document, correct, Mr. Martin? That says, you will take this person and transport them to southwestern state in Marion, knowing good and well they have no bed out there. So you're stuck with them. And not only the law enforcement side, these are with county citizens that are made possibly the lowest point in their life, and they're stuck in a hospital room up here for how many ever hours? We have gave Mount Rogers money. They have promised us a crisis stabilization center, drop-off center, whatever they call it. What? I'm, has it, anybody ever dropped one off there? Is it open?
No, it's mine off.
And my suggestion is, at some point, we request Chief Foster, and by that point, it'll be Sheriff Foster, to start keeping track of time and mileage. And next year, when it comes to budget time, it'll be my recommendation that we cut Mount Rogers' budget if they can't do a better job. It's not fair to the citizens. We fund them very healthy to provide a service, and I'll give them credit. It's not all their fault, but something's got to give. You know, Smith County, it's, you know, Marion Police Department come out and said, hey, unless they're a danger, we're not going to serve this paperwork. And if you spit time around people in crisis, one minute they might not be a danger, next minute they might be. Somebody's going to get hurt. So, Chief, I'll, if you've got anything to add?
There again, just as a perfect example, I may have three or four guys on night shift. They'll finally decide they're going to do a placement at ten, eleven o'clock. That young man gets paperwork, he's going to Newport New. He won't be back ten, eleven o'clock tomorrow morning if he's lucky. That's if you don't stop and give him something, do you? I've spoke with sheriff Anderson out in Washington County. They've actually had them hold him out there past forty-eight hours in a hospital bed. I, it's not fair to the citizens, number one. And like you, I'll elaborate back to what you said. You've got a mental health crisis. That's the lowest point in their life. You know, at forty-eight to seventy-two hours, I'm starting to think if they've forgotten what they was even taken up there for. So it's just, it's, it's a dangerous situation. And this isn't only adults, board, this is juveniles, too, that's being put in that same predicament. Our closest juvenile bed right now is Stanton. So there again, that takes time away from citizens and it's time up that. We're obligated to do it. I mean, I understand that. But they need to have a placement on a bed. Basically, they're taking paperwork and fictitiously putting on it that they've got a bed available, say, at Southwest State Hospital, knowing good and well before the paperwork's ever prepared, there was never a bed there to start with. So that's what we're running into. So we had this same scenario today, had a deputy started last night, ended up going into probably fourteen, sixteen, eighteen hours. I said, we fulfill our obligation to pick the person up and take them up there. And we have no order. This obligation is an eight-hour commitment on paper, that somebody has to stay there eight hours. We're already double on that. I said, if you don't have an order to take him somewhere, leave the hospital right now, and I'll take any, you know, anything comes back at me, I'll take care of it. It, it's just ridiculous. We're, we're not utilizing the officers for what they're meant for. We're being used as babysitters. And it's not fair to the citizens, it's not fair to anybody. I, I agree with you, but something's going to have to be done somehow.
Would you mind getting together with, with Mr. Hankins, and we'll get the, we'll get the letter drafted and get the input from you to go with it? I'll look at getting a schedule with Ms. Sandy Bryant. Thank you. To get a meeting lined up with her, and also with my regional managers meeting, I will bring up the discussion and see what all of us can do regionally to try to, to at least raise the issue.
Well, and, and, you know, like I said, you know, going back to the, you know, not only at some point, law enforcement's entitled to overtime, but there's the wear and tear on the vehicle, the gas, whatever. There, my, you know, there's only so much money in the bucket. So, and I'm, we've got a special guest in the audience tonight, town councilman Gilman from Withfield. Mr., I don't know if, if y'all have had a discussion. I know the town.
I talked to a couple of officers this morning. We talked exactly about the same thing you all.
And if you'd like to be a part of the meeting, or if you'll put him on the invite list, and we'll get popcorn, and we'll just have a... Oh, well, I forgot about that, I'm sorry, Gary.
...come in and get the paperwork, hand it to me when I was in dispatch and out the door that one. And then the rest of it was laid down, whoever was going to labor that person with it.
And we can get all the assistance on this we need. I met with Sheriff Parton in Montgomery County last Friday. It was fifteen sheriffs there and myself, who has not been elected yet, but I was the body. And that's every sheriff's office's number one problem right now. So it's, you can call them all the way, as far as Lee County to Eric Orange, who's a sheriff of Roanoke County, was there with me as well. And they'll all help you any way they can because we're just needing, we need, their counties are trying to address it.
Well, and as bad as we have, if you look at Lee County.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, and, it's, to me, what the governor done the other day is, it's nothing more than it's going to be another unfunded mandate that, that goes on the local house.
Thank you all. I appreciate any help you can give us with that as well. I would ask you a lot, thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. I don't know if you, if you said this already, but, you know, it leaves the county one deputy short in the town, one or two officers short, too, for protecting the other citizens.
We'll, we'll do that, and I am reaching out to VACO because several years ago, the TDO issue came up with them and tried, you know, I'll see what, because I know all the counties are going through it, but we'll, we'll push every button we can.
And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything?
Yes, sir. Speaking of Mr. Hankins, there was some personnel changes on the rescue squad retreat last night. I want to thank Mr. Hankins and Mr. McCabe in the town retreat for working together to, to address some issues and move forward.
Does anybody else have anything? All right, we'll be adjourned.